Okay, good afternoon. We'll call the regular board meeting for Wednesday, December thirteenth, 2023, to order at four oh one PM. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
She's here.
She's here.
She's here. Director Carey?
Aye.
Here. Director Hayfley, thank you.
Here.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
We have all seven board members in attendance here in person. Director Bankus will be joining us momentarily. We do have executive session today, or before that, please, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Adoption of agenda. Director Hayfley, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankus? Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The agenda was adopted as presented. We do have executive session for roughly ninety minutes today. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 246402B. Particular matter, master agreement between District Eleven and Colorado Springs Education Association.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will enter into executive session and rejoin our regular board meeting at approximately five thirty. Thank you. Okay, good evening. Board members, could you please return to the board ayes? I see everyone up here. Thank you. Executive session went a little longer, so thank you for your patience as we got done with executive session. And we have returned from executive session, and there is no need to modify the agenda. The agenda was, for those of you who did not join us at the beginning of the meeting, the agenda was adopted as presented. May I please have the students from Mitchell come on up here? James Murphy from Mitchell will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, James. You've got a loud voice. You don't need even a microphone, I think, so the whole audience could hear you clearly. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, spotlight. And this is going to be the Unified Bowling Teams and Unified Theater Expansion. We have a whole bunch of students up there. I'm going to turn it over to you Superintendent Goll.
Thank you, President Malpakum. Our community, we're so excited tonight to talk about our Unified Sports. I'm going to ask Chris Noel to come on forward, and as he's coming forward, just to share briefly, the impact that you're going to see tonight is not just at the individual level. A lot of times, we do a school spotlight. We're shipping that now to program spotlights, because this program is influencing not just the kids you're going to hear from today, but every one of the schools and incredible amounts of our community. We are the first district in El Paso County to have an MOU with Colorado Springs Special Olympics on Unified Sports, and we will continue to expand this. This is going to be about our Unified Bowling, and I'm going to hand it over to our Athletic Director, Chris Noel.
I'm going to go ahead and, before we get going, I'm going to wait and make sure that all of them are here. So, first and foremost, Board, thank you for allowing us to bring some of our Unified Kids and partners to the board meeting tonight. When we first started talking about Unified Sports, we have talked about Unified Sports in District Eleven for probably seven or eight years, and we just never really got it going. And so, before we get going and hearing from our kids, I want to make sure that we thank a handful of people. First, Dr. Mendelsburg is right over there. Without Dr. Mendelsburg saying, "Chris, let's make this happen," Unified Sports does not happen in District Eleven. It is that simple. It is Dr. Mendelsburg that said, "Chris, let's make this happen." So, first and foremost, thank you, Dr. Mendelsburg. Also, yes. Anytime you launch a big program, I think the first question you have to ask yourself is, "How do we get to yes?" And how do we get the schools to yes it? I worked in a building for over twenty years, and the question when I became a central administrator was, "How do I get the buildings, the schools, to yes?" I was worried about getting the buildings to yes. I also want to thank our athletic directors tonight, because when I asked the question, I couldn't even get the question out of my mouth before our athletic and activity directors said, "Yes, we're all in." So, I also want to thank them for their leadership. It's pretty simple for leaders to say yes, but sooner or later, you've got to actually get down into the trenches and get the trenches to say yes. I want to highlight the four people that you see on your screen. Megan Henderson from Doherty, Michelle Dryling from Mitchell, Trevor Peterson from Coronado, and Sarah Shub from Palmer. These are the folks, yes. These are our teachers, our special education teachers in the high schools. They're also our Unified Bowling Coaches. And again, before we could ask the question, they said yes. I said, "We haven't worked out the stipend portion yet. We're not sure about the money." And they said, "It's not about the money. We'll do it without the money." So, thank you to those folks as well. Unified Bowling, real quickly. This past fall, we have serviced over one hundred kits. That is roughly fifty Unified Student Athletes as well as fifty Partners. And instead of me talking tonight, I think it's better if we actually hear from our kids. So, tonight, I want to introduce one of our Unified Student Athletes, Josh Wooton. Can you please come up and join me, sir? All right, so I have prepped some of our folks, and tonight Josh is going to talk to us a little bit. Can you tell me the impact that Unified has had on you? Why do you like Unified Sports?
Because I get to see all my friends at school. It's competing. It's really fun to have friends and family and everything to do with my family and all that, yeah.
Did you get a chance to compete against Shine Mountain at Regionals?
Yes.
And that, we still made it to state, right? But we didn't beat Shine Mountain that day, right?
No.
What about at state? Did we beat Shine Mountain at state? This coming Friday, we've got some basketball going on, right? And last night, Palmer High School had to play number three in the state Denver East at Palmer, right? With our men's basketball team?
Yeah.
And we beat them by twenty, right? Pretty good, pretty big deal.
Yeah.
Jackson Weber, really good basketball player at Palmer High School, right? Who's better at basketball, you or Jackson Weber?
Me, obviously. I can beat them.
How about our football team?
I can still beat them too.
Okay. On Monday, or excuse me, on Friday, you've decided to challenge somebody to a three-point shootout. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that our Superintendent, Mr. Goll?
Yes, sir, it is. I can beat them so as well.
You can beat him as well?
Yep.
That's that guy right over there.
Let's do a game on, buddy.
Game on, Friday, okay? Josh, thank you, my friend. We appreciate you and your work. Not only did it have an impact on our Unified Athletes, it also had a huge impact on our Unified Parents. So, at this time, I want to introduce Doherty Parent, Mr. Brandon Matlock. The question that I asked Mr. Matlock was, "How has Unified impacted you, your family, and your son, Michael?" Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Brandon Matlock. My son is Michael Mendoza. He played on the Unified Bowling Program for Doherty High School. It's an easy answer for me of how it impacted Michael. I truly believe that this sport helped to collaborate with his peers at not only Doherty High School, but within the district as well. And if anybody knows my son, he's not really an extrovert. He's more introverted. And this gave him the opportunity to step out of that, and I really appreciate that. For the family, it allowed me to talk to other members of families in the Unified Sports Program, to include athletic directors and teachers alike. And I believe if we continue this forward, it's going to be something that's going to be magical. So, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to allow me to speak, but, you know, I know Michael couldn't be here today, but he really, really enjoyed this year of bowling, and he'd definitely like to talk a little bit of smack to everybody when he's bowling.
Thank you. I promise, we are not teaching the kids how to talk smack. That just is happening. It does come naturally. It might be something within the athletic world. I also want to introduce to you one of our teachers and one of our coaches, Michelle Dryling from Mitchell High School. Michelle's question that I asked her was, "How has Unified Sports impacted you as a person, and how has it impacted the Special Education Department at Mitchell?"
So, for me, as a person, I would not be a teacher without Unified. I started Unified when I was in high school, and, which to you might not seem far ago, but it was. And, but that's the reason why I got into special ed. So, if it wasn't for Unified, I wouldn't be here, and I wouldn't be with these guys. And for Mitchell, inclusivity is the biggest thing. I've seen these kids be included so much more, whether that's with their peers, with the teachers. There's people that come and support them that, in years past, I've never seen come and communicate with them. So, it's been an incredible improvement, and I can't wait to see where it goes.
Thank you, Michelle. We've had a couple of partners that were going to join us. One cannot make it due to the roads. So, at this time, I'm going to introduce one of our partners, Doherty sophomore Carter Kidd. Carter's prep question was, "What did you enjoy most about Unified Sports, and how has it changed you as a person?"
Well, I think the most, or how it really impacted me during Unified Sports was my patience. And I think many could say, even my friends could say, that I'm probably not the most patient person with some people. But being able to hang out with everyone here kind of gave me an understanding and different perspective of what they're seeing or what they're doing, and kind of just like, I don't know, made it easier for me to understand and kind of, I don't know, I don't know what the best word is for it, but, yeah, I mean, that's about it.
I have to answer your question. One of the questions Carter asked me at the bowling alley, we got to hang out every Monday night, was, "Do I get to let her?" And so, what I'm going to say is, all the kids that you see in this boardroom tonight get to let her. And they get to represent their school. Ms. Olson, can you change it to the next picture? This is, this is what it's about. This is a picture that was taken in Inglewood, Colorado, at the state bowling tournament. And you've heard the impact that it's had on kids and on families. What you have not heard, Mr. Wilson, will you please join me, the Athletic Director at Palmer? What you have not heard is the impact that it has on the entire school as a whole. So, Mr. Wilson's going to talk a little bit about the impact it has on a school.
Yeah, so, we went to Regionals, and our student council, we have an amazing group of students, amazing class president right here, and teachers, and they said, "We want to be there. We want to support this group." So, we went to Regionals. We had this group of probably forty kids, and they loved every second that we were there. And so, we got back to the school, and we were pumped, because we're going to state. We got a trophy. And I walked in to thank them, and all they said to me was, "So, how are we getting to Denver for state?" And so, the next thing you know, we've got a full bus. Our whole cheer team is coming. Doherty's whole cheer team is coming. They're a big group of students. And we were the only two schools out of the maybe thirty, twenty-six, twenty-seven that had even kind of a cheering section, and we rolled in there with two full buses. And I think every single kid that was there was amazingly impacted. Again, our student council said, "How are we going to send them off and celebrate them?" And we had probably a thousand kids line up in the hallway. Students made signs at home without even being prompted and brought them to show the support for these guys. And it was absolutely incredible. I think my life was changed, and more so every one of our students in Palmer High School because of this amazing opportunity.
So, this initially started when Mr. Goll said, "Chris, I want to take the two teams that qualified for state, and I want to bring them to the board meeting." I said, "Well, can I bring the whole crew?" So, he said, "Yes, absolutely. Please bring the whole crew." But we do want to recognize our two teams. Out of twenty-seven schools, high schools in the state of Colorado, two of them were from Colorado Springs School District Eleven as state finalists. So, at this time, I'd like to bring up the Doherty and the Palmer State qualifying bowling teams. So, just a quick, how does this whole thing work? The way Unified Bowling works is you have five kids on a team, three bowl at a time. Two of those three have to be a Unified Student Athlete, while the other one is a Partner. While those three kids bowl, one of them also has to be a female. So, you can manipulate your roster however you want, but you have to have two Unified Kids and one girl bowling at a given time. If there's three of us, Person One throws the ball. It doesn't matter what I throw, the very next person is going to throw the next ball. We bowl five games, and you ultimately end up with a score. Both of our teams ended up in the top half at the state bowling tournament, and super excited for what the future holds for us. So, congratulations to these two teams. We are now to the point where we are transitioning from bowling to basketball. So, Unified Basketball will be alive and well on Friday. I believe you guys have received an invitation to our first jamboree. We are super excited that we've partnered with the Pikes Peak Athletic Foundation. Each one of our, Pikes Peak Athletic Foundation as well as Shields, each one of our Unified Student Athletes will receive a pair of basketball shoes at no cost on Friday. So, we are super, super excited with what is coming with basketball. You all will make, or we will make sure that you get a schedule of all of their games in January.
So, if you want to get something done, you give it to Chris Noel. And I just, before, you can all read this for yourself. I'm going to save my print here for a moment. The reason this works is that there's a drive that comes from athletics that is competitive. There's a competitive nature, Chris, in all of our athletic directors at our schools that goes unmatched. And when Chris and Scott are back there, if you can wave your hand for everybody to see you, when they took this initiative on, it wasn't, "We're going to take a small step. We're going to go all the way." And the fact that we have already state qualifiers in this first full season of Unified Bowling says to you that both Chris and everyone that's touched this have given that competitive edge to parts of our community that are so often just overlooked. This is a win for everybody in the district. I want to thank Chris from the bottom of my heart. Do you want to read that now?
Absolutely. Thanks for the safe, sir. Damian, where are you, Damian?
This is Damian, and this is a letter, a note that he wrote to Mr. Wilson that says, "Thank you for taking us bowling. Bowling is so much fun. My partner, Jackson, helped me be a winner." I believe all kids deserve the feeling to be a winner, and all of these kids in my book are big-time winners. Thanks for having us tonight.
Mr. Noel, we have one more thing. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Scott Manchester, and I'm a representative from Shields. One of the things that was a no-brainer for us when Mr. Noel had called us was saying, "Let's jump on board with this, and let's get involved." With the Pikes Peak Athletic Foundation as well, in regards to what we're able to do for these kids, forty pairs of basketball shoes on Friday, along with a surprise that they don't know about that's going to come from Shields, and then one other thing, could I get a couple helpers from Palmer? There's a board, a small board that's up there against the wall. And besides our sponsorships and our donations and kind of what we do with them, and this is just a small, and you guys hold this, yeah, you guys hold this, and show the board. And you can show the people first, and then just a small, besides, like I said, just the sponsorship that we do with the schools, all four district high schools, as well as just the end-of-the-year giving and some of those campaigns that we have. We just had, it's a small token of our appreciation of what they're trying to do, and what you're doing as a district, just a thousand dollars. But for them to go ahead and use that at their discretion, on top of what we're doing with the basketball shoes and some other, some of the neat stuff that they get on Friday. So, just wanted to show my appreciation to Chris, as well as the four athletic directors, the coaches, and most of all, the kids that are involved. So, thank you for what you guys are doing.
So, you have a couple of certificates to offer appreciation for folks. I'd like to keep the kids up here while we do it.
Please do. What you don't know about Scott, Scott's a retired educator. He served as an Athletic Director at Canyon City and Liberty High School. We're okay with Canyon City. The other part, we leave alone. But we, Scott is an educator himself, as you probably could hear from his passion, so.
Rick Brady, Senior Director of Unified Champion Schools, Special Olympics Colorado. Rick and his team have been instrumental in the successful implementation of Unified Sports in D-11. Rick and his team have been with D-11 every step of the way, opening numerous doors of support and opportunities for our student athletes. Rick, D-11 thanks you for not only what you have done, but for what you continue to do. Thank you for your support and for purchasing all of our sweet uniforms. Audrey Derubis and Tyce Derubis. The Derubis family owns Peak Bowl and is a proud partner of D-11. For many years, Audrey served D-11 on numerous SAC and PTA committees, and now she supports our district as a business owner. Audrey quickly made Peak Bowl the home to D-11 Unified Bowling and opened the alley during off-business hours. D-11 is fortunate to have a premier facility to compete in and is thankful for their partnership. Tyce is a proud 2020 Doherty High School graduate in the Sports Management Program at UCCS. As the League Commissioner for our bowling league, Tyce has shown outstanding leadership and customer service as he gives back to high school athletics. D-11 Unified Bowling would not experience the success we have had if it weren't for the Derubis family. Nathan Lentz, President of Pikes Peak Athletic Foundation. The Pikes Peak Athletic Foundation started its support of D-11 by donating...
Not Nathan, but accepting on his behalf.
By donating over eight thousand dollars worth of new sports equipment to Mitchell High School this past fall. When they heard D-11 was starting a Unified Basketball Team, they quickly jumped on board and purchased a new pair of hoop shoes for each of our Unified Athletes. We look forward to our shoe distribution on Friday, December fifteenth, and are grateful for your continued support of all students. Thank you, Nate, and the Pikes Peak Athletic Foundation. And in conclusion, Scott Manchester, Team Sports Coordinator at Shields. In 2021, before their store opened, Shields reached out to D-11 and made D-11 their first school district in Southern Colorado to have the exclusive Shields School Partnership. While the support has been amazing, their recent support of finding and providing all of our Unified Athletes basketball shoes is unparalleled. We hear the shoes are boxed and ready for delivery, and we share your excitement for our athletes.
Before you guys take off, thank you. Mr. Noel, hang on a minute. Yeah, thank you. This started with your vision, with support from Superintendent Goll, and like you talked about, Dr. Mendelsburg. But this is a collective effort, including all our staff members that stepped up when you reached out to them at the high school level. You know, they wanted to be part of this program, and I know, was it a year or so back when we got the invite to come to the bowling alley and we participated? Some of the board members were there, and Superintendent Goll was there. It was the initial jamboree start-off for the bowling, similar to what we are having for basketball. And to see that thrive and flourish like what it is right now, it is really heartwarming to the amount of time and effort that it has taken, and your passion is also readily evident in what you're doing. So, thank you for bringing this, and we are only as good, I know, we are only as good as, you know, helping our vulnerable students lift them up, elevate them, and this provides them, you know, an opportunity to engage in schools and be part of our school district too. And all our other students that help support our special education students too. So, this brings the school community together. Board members, do you guys have any closing thoughts or comments? Director Bankus?
I love it when our community comes together, and we share, and we come back and contribute. I have to say that Chris Noel was a student in my master's level class that I was teaching, and so, seeing him progress and develop over time has just been amazing. And then, when the program first started, he invited all of us, and many of us went to see the Unified Sports Program that was bowling that day, and it was awe-inspiring. So, thank you to all who support. Thank you to Shields for the contribution that they're making. And I didn't catch the bowling alley person, but I know where you are. So, thank you so much for all of it.
Director Hayfley?
I have worked with Chris Noel for many years. I've known him for a long time. We go way back. And this program, I got to tell you, I'm a little speechless, which rarely happens for me, but I can't tell you what a better person to be at the helm of this program is than Chris Noel. So, if you have any kind of concerns at all about it, I would hope that you would just wipe them away, because Chris is on top of it, and when he's on top of something, you know it's going to be done right. So, thank you.
Director Carey? Yeah, I called him out. Director Carey?
As a father of a special needs child myself, I was also choking up at a few points during the presentation. So, Chris, I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing.
This is only the start. This is only the start. Let's see what you need.
Well, hey, so I will. To expand on the vision, Doherty High School has taken the lead on Unified Theater. And so, then we've changed the structure of Ryan Reed's position at Doherty and given him an extra point five. He's actually introducing Unified Theater now to the other high schools as well. So, the idea of inclusion is spreading beyond the work that Chris and the team have led here with sports. And if you didn't get a chance to see Big Hero Six last year at Doherty High School, it was just a tremendous performance, and it was great. So, we look forward to that rolling out in high school this year as well.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Well done. Moving on, we did our awards and recognition, so Superintendent's report. Superintendent Goll, I will turn it over to you for the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Melissa, for the slide changer. Hi, everyone. It's great to be here again. I'll try and go quickly. I know we always have a lot to cover. This, a couple of weeks ago, we got recognition from US News and World Report that many of the schools in our portfolio were recognized. We listed the first and second in category of elementary, middle, or high school. And of course, these ratings are always subject to what are the categories. I wanted to just give people briefly that it's on college readiness, proficiency in performance, underserved student population... in performance, understudied student population performance, college curriculum, and graduation rate. So, if you are the principal or AP from these schools, please come forward and let me give you your plaque.
Seaver Randy?
We can do this quickly.
Yep, we're gonna get them all together. Tony? Come on forward. I want to say Nikki, can I get Teresa? Thank you. All right, big picture.
Got it?
All right, number one if you're number one and number two if you're number two.
Congratulations to all of you.
Okay, changing slides. Happy to announce that as of today, we have a new live D-11 Facebook page. Please go visit it. It is light, it is energetic, it is multiple layers of how we want to communicate our strategies at the district level, through the student eye, through our community, through our staff, and many schools included. So, big thanks to our D-11 engagement team for this very quick relaunch and this exciting time for us to communicate. As I scrolled through today, I couldn't help but notice I'm an ice cream aficionado, and did you know that our Trailblazer students have their own flavor? And it's available at Joss and John's only in the Mountain Shadows location, but we have a second-grade flavor there by yours truly, our Trailblazer. And these are just some of the light things that you'll be able to see and/or be able to go eat a pint of ice cream for dinner, because that's okay. As long as you don't tell anybody. In keeping with our normal way that we celebrate our staff, this ESP Wednesdays, we're a couple of weeks behind. I want to just make one shout-out here specifically to Sylvia. She does all our substitute teachers. Over five-hundred-plus teachers a day, she has to make sure that we're sourced and resourced and ready to go, to make sure that our staff can take care of additional training, the personal days that they're afforded, or if they're just not feeling well. So, thank you to Sylvia and everybody else listed there. Of course, Teacher Tuesdays, two for Teacher Tuesdays, three for Teacher Tuesdays, three times two, those are all Ts for the literative, to make six Teacher Tuesdays. And up here I want to highlight Emily Roberson from Columbia, not only an exceptional second-grade teacher, but also the Martial Arts Club leader after school. So many of our staff do more than just what we ask them for during their duty day, and Emily's just a perfect example of how we can continue to invest in our school after the bell. Thank you so much to all our six Teacher Tuesdays. In keeping with this, we just wanted to throw this slide in here. We weren't sure everybody knew that on behalf of the board and the administration, we've been doing teacher, staff appreciation breakfasts, and these are the schools that we got through in the first semester. So, we're halfway there. We do about two a week. We just show up in the morning with little bag breakfasts. There's no slideshow, there's no new programming, there's no monkey, school, staff monkey survey for people to be able to decide what they like or they don't like. Just a chance to engage with our staff, with the staff and the school board, and to be able to say thanks. And of particular note, I want to call out Director Ott, who I think has been at every single one of them, so. Thank you, Director Ott. Almost. I think you got three more than I do, because sometimes it's hard to get there that early. But it's just so much fun. A simple thank you, you can see many of our teachers are holding, and our staff are holding, what we call Elevate Awards, those who've elevated their game on behalf of students. And to see a teacher or a staff member cry over a piece of paper at seven fifteen in the morning says they either really love their work, or we're just starting way too early, and they're just really tired. Maybe it's a little bit of both. Okay, and now I'm going to give the floor to two of our students who are able to attend the Colorado Association of School Boards. If I could have Leah and Ava come forward, and I'm going to come grab this for you.
Thank you for having us. My name is Leah Martinez and I attend Palmer High School.
And my name is Ava Frisma and I attend Coronado High School. We were lucky enough to be chosen to represent our high schools in attending the Colorado Association of School Boards Leadership Conference this past, last Friday and Saturday, the eighth and ninth. Five D-11 students were able to attend, three of them alongside me and Ava. Elia Ariz Rosado Hernandez from Mitchell High School, Amanda Malsum from Doerty High School, Faith Alvey from Odyssey Early Colleges, and our two chaperones, Ms. Klein from Palmer and Ms. Goddick from Coronado.
And Ms. Klein and Ms. Goddick are in the audience.
Please stand up, let everybody see you. Thanks.
Throughout these two days, we were able to do some learning sessions with peers and districts from all across the state. We could, we did some breakout sessions, and we got to hear from a very inspiring keynote speaker. And we were also able to have breakfast with some of our board members. I'd like to shout out Dr. Mel Packham and Ms. Ott. They joined us for breakfast Saturday morning.
We would like to share some of our takeaways from this experience. We had time to connect with our peers in D-11 and in other districts. This typically isn't the case, so it was really nice to hear from a student from Doerty who was facing similar issues as to us at Palmer, and just be able to connect and share our support with each other. It was also nice to hear from smaller districts and the bigger districts across Colorado and the issues and how they're solving those. It was also a really great experience in bringing back ideas to our schools and communities. I know amongst the five of us, we all agreed that one of our biggest takeaways and something that we really found great amongst the different districts was how they had student involvement and voice at the district level.
We also learned a lot that will definitely stick with us, like hearing about others' leadership approaches. This taught me how I can bring new leadership to our school and how I can maybe take back some of these approaches to my school. Also, the keynote speaker, he was able to teach us how staying true to our word can build trust and relationships, and we were able to hear about how this one person affected so many people in so many ways by just staying true to his word, and that was just very inspirational. The other, the last thing was D-11 board discussion at breakfast. It was just so great to hear how they are supporting us and want to hear from us and want to hear our voice. Yeah.
At the end of the day, at the end of our day on Saturday, we were able to all come together and eat lunch and have a discussion, and it was centered around what we wanted to bring back to our district and to our board. And this was a discussion exploring how D-11 would use student voice in committees and/or within a student board. So, we were able to all discuss issues that the five of us have at our schools, and how we would like to see that being brought to you guys. And within that discussion, we all agreed that it would be a great idea to all come together and have a student board and have students come and present issues that were brought to us.
Yeah, and along with that, I was talking to my teacher, my student council teacher, Ms. Goddick, about how I noticed that I wasn't really sure about like if Coronado had like a voice with the board, or like, so I asked her about that, and she said we didn't have much of that. So, that is really a goal of mine. I would love to get our students more involved and get their voice heard. Yeah.
And thank you guys for allowing us to experience this, and we hope that it continues in the next years to come. So, thank you.
Can we go back a slide? I want to go back a slide. So, first of all, I love the way Ava said that they got the chance to go. These students, all five of them named theirs, or five or six? Five, because the last one says chaperone. They volunteered, they asked to go because they have an interest in governance and they have an interest in student voice. I want to really thank Ms. Klein and Ms. Goddick, and we'll be following up with them, to take the learnings from the students, that it's Casby that brought this together. This question of student voice and student influence and governance is now ongoing for a year and a half. Ms. Klein and I have been talking about it for some time. But this was the catalyst that now got us to that next step. And so, I'm super thankful for this venue to have given our students the opportunity to come together and then say, "Wait a second, you're right. We should be finding a way that we can participate." And so, we'll engage then shortly after the new year to figure out how we bring this into second semester, some way with the committees and with the potential student boards. That'd be great. So, just hats off to both of you on a snowy night, finals coming up this week, and I know you're representing everyone else. And then just for folks who didn't see Ms. Klein and Ms. Goddick for volunteering their time on the weekend as well to be supportive of student voice. Thank you. Okay, I think you're going to make a motion later on no meeting next week, or there's a board retreat, and so as part of one of the deliverables we had before the end of the school year, the end of the act, the end of the calendar year, was to give the board our vision and our updates on where we are on all things academics.
So, before we get to that, I do have a couple of comments to make to the students and the rest of your Superintendent's report. I'll open it up for the board first. Do you have any thoughts or comments on Superintendent's report that was presented by Mr. Gall? Director Ott.
I just, I want to be sure we do thank Leah and Ava for coming, because yes, it is finals night and the weather, but also just the experience of being able to hear from students and have that two-way communication. And Leah has asked you and I, President Mel Packham, to come to Palmer and have a conversation about the certificate of our participation and what that might mean, and personally, I'm hoping we can pass some of that off to Brandon Comfort, because it's so involved, and it's an evolving conversation. But thanks for stepping up for all of that and attending the entire weekend. Appreciate it.
So, thank you. Seeing no further comments, I do want to say a couple of comments to you. Just like today it's snowing, Friday night we got quite a bit of snow. So, I wake up Saturday morning, I did not want to drive up from the northeast part of town all the way up to Broadmoor, and I had a conversation with your, one of your chaperones, Ms. Klein out there, and she said the students are coming. If the students are coming at seven in the morning, I didn't have any excuse not to come. So, I had to make the journey. So, thank you guys for driving up there in that weather to wanting to come to that breakfast and also listen to that keynote speaker. Just like you said, that keynote speaker was really inspiring. I don't think there was a dry eye in that audience when he was talking about his experience, and he was really moving, really good speaker. I hope you guys take his words to heart about wanting to make a difference, that each of you can make a difference. You know, if we disengage ourselves, that one person cannot make a difference. That was the message of the keynote speaker. And I enjoyed the discussion that we had, and I know that Director Ott would have similar thoughts over the breakfast table. Sometimes we are, at this time in society, where civic discourse is lost. It seems like adults are more entrenched in their positions and they don't want to see other perspectives. We had a healthy discussion about so many different topics, and what was gratifying to me was you as students were able to look objectively at both perspectives that are there. We talked about block schedule, we talked about Palmer High School renovations, and knowing that the future of our country is in, and our community is in the hands of students like you, I think we are well-served by you. So, thank you for having that good civic discourse with us, and stay engaged. I think one of you, you are a senior and you are still a year away from graduation. So, I hope to see you on your campuses, you certainly during graduation, and give, send us an invite to the board to participate, like you talked about, how can student's voice be heard. Send us an invite to attend some of your student council meetings, and we would be glad to participate. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Klein, and all the chaperones, Ms. Goddick, for also taking them. And in prior years, participation was limited, but from seeing what it is, Superintendent Gall, this is a program that probably we need to continue in the future, get our students engaged in this way. Thank you. And thank you for being here on your finals week two. So, you can go back and, you know, you don't need to stay here for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Superintendent Gall, back to you.
Okay, if I could get Chief Osadato to come on forward and pick up where we were on literacy. Clicky's up there.
Hello, everyone. Great. Let's see if the clicker's working. Great. Well, I'm really excited to have the opportunity to be with you tonight and go into, by the request of the Superintendent and the Board, a little bit more about academics, our focus connected to the strategic plan, and dive a little bit deeper in literacy. With that, you can see our agenda for just this portion of time. We'll briefly touch on our foundation with our priorities, highlight the major improvement strategy, and then dive into the buckets of work within academics, the changes that have been made there, which is in our system of support, and then go into literacy with our trajectory of learning in three key areas. Talk about what we're hearing so far in our data and surveys from our leaders and teachers, and leave some time for some questions. All right, so this is, again, I talk about this, I just came off of a teacher forum. I've been to several from last year to this year, and this, as I've said there, continues to remain our North Star, where we're headed as a district. Our mission is to empower the whole student to profoundly impact the world, and our board priorities remain the same with a heavy emphasis on student success, student achievement. And here are three of the recently, fairly recently created district goals with the Superintendent and the Board, and our highlighted goal of literacy. This is really the target, so this is where we're trying to reach as a district, minimally in literacy. And so, if that's the target where we're trying to reach, here is actually the how of where we're going to get that with our major improvement strategies. So, you can see the three of them listed there, and again, we're narrowing in and focusing in on best-first instruction, trying to work to develop coherence in that tier one, or what some call, have called previously core instruction. All right, so how are we organized, and how are we organized differently to be able to implement that strategy? Right here you see the buckets of organization within academics. And so, we'll start off with curriculum and instruction. Curriculum instruction, we've done work to rally around best-first instruction and make sure that we're implementing support K-12. And with that, we've hired a new Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, Liz Tenke. If you can raise your hand right there, for who comes with a multiple of years of experience in this work. Early education has also, we've organized this bucket of work under academics, and that has been a charge by the Board and our Superintendent with the move to universal pre-K and the addition of multiple seats in programs in early ed. We have Sarah Carlson leading that work, and Sarah's right here. Then we worked in academics to reorganize departments and make a future-ready department. One of the things that we saw is that we had no one department solely responsible for leading the work in college, career in college success. And so, thus, movement and organization to have a future-ready department to- And so thus, movement and organization to have a future-ready department to lead that work. And Valerie Skates, right here, is the leader of that bucket and body of work, in close connection and ties to our CTE and workplace learning friends. And then we made the bold move to move, as the superintendents talk about, instructional technology and library services to academics, so we could have a stronger tie with instructional technology, library, and curriculum instruction. And so far, we've seen some great collaboration really occurring with Melissa Smith, the leader of that department. All right, special populations. In the past, we've had a leader of special, special education, and then a facilitator leader in culturally and linguistically diverse education, and gifted and talented. And the move we've made is to have all teams come together under special populations. So Deirdre Shear, who's not actually here tonight, I can't, she can't wave to you here because she is picking her mother up from the airport, who's coming in from out of town, but she leads that department. And with special education, her background there, and then culturally and linguistically diverse education with Nicole Girarden, and also with Emily Andrews. I know her name, but I always like, I have a thing about names. Sometimes I miss them. Director Nelson can attest to that. But with Emily also being connected and reporting to Deirdre. So that's been great, the amount they've done work on their strategic plan as special populations to align to our overall district plan, and that seemingly small change has had a big impact. Student engagement, it's allowed us to focus on student engagement with social emotional learning, classroom environment, work and attendance with Chris Brandt, leading that work right over here. And then we also made the move to have professional development come, I believe, from the HR component of our district into academics with Linda Sanders, leading that work. And lastly, expanded academic learning is actually under and connected to curriculum instruction. We again reorganized already existing positions to have a greater impact on what we call expanded academic learning. So those are the intervention, enrichment, extended school year with summer programming, any of the tutoring work that we do. And from the board report last year, you saw some of the changes that we were making with our summer programming. We've been, that work has been underway to make those changes that we said we would deliver on, on that report from last year. And we also saw some great gains from that, which we also reported to the board as well. Okay. So that's the organization of our systems of support and some changes that we've made in academics over the course of this year and last year. All right, so major improvement strategy, one, best-first instruction, as a couple of things our superintendent says, and says often. Best-first instruction is not a program that we buy, it is a philosophy. It really aims to give all students the best opportunity to learn standards-based, grade-level and beyond content and skills the first time that they receive instruction. And it is the measurement of our highest quality instruction, because again, as our superintendent says often, the number-one way to student achievement is access to high-quality And we follow a research-based framework to implement that. Really, that's the instructional core. So it's that interaction of the student, the teacher, with content to improve achievement. And our work with the teacher is on instructional practice. We've narrowed in and focused in on purposeful planning. With the student, it's that engagement in the learning process. And with content, it's ensuring that we have the greatest and most challenging resources and content to put in front of students. All right. This graphic tells you in, in developing coherence in tier-one instruction, it's a two-part strategy, denoted by the red side and the gray side. So we're focusing on our systems that we put in place in D-11 with content-specific professional learning. And the systems are our cascading professional learning, our one-plan continuous improvement cycles, and those systems of accountability and support with our area network model. And then our content-specific professional learning, we've narrowed in on our mathematics content expertise, our literacy content expertise, and our secondary content and competency work and expertise in high school. Okay, so diving deeper into literacy, we're going to talk about the trajectory of learning and the path we've been on since these, over the past few years, but going deeply into it this past year. Again, we're focusing on purposeful planning or planning for learning, and in literacy, it's a little different than mathematics. You start with the text and then you align with standard. That isn't to ensure that the attributes of the texts are very much aligned to the standards we're trying to teach, and it's also to ensure that we're putting in front of students grade-level and beyond complex, meaty texts that they're able to engage in and use their critical thinking skills. So this shows that, that those main areas of text-first planning in text complexity, questions with essential focus and text-dependent questions, background knowledge, and how we address unfinished learning through scaffolds and helping to support students that still need to learn to read. This is the trajectory of that learning, each of the sessions. And so with that, we, just with leaders, this last K-12 meeting completed session five, but you can see the progression. We started with text complexity, we moved into annotating texts and PLC text talks, then moved into evidence, text-dependent questions, adoptions, complexity and implementation, lesson planning with TDQs, the shifts with background knowledge, text sets. And then we'll move into connecting that to foundations, components of the literacy block. Also embedded throughout, at the last K-12 meeting, we introduced the instructional guide, like a learn, like a walkthrough-type tool that connects what should you be seeing in a literacy classroom, connected to standards. So that was this session five that we just did at the last K-12 meeting. I know Director Jorgensen and President Mal Pakem were able to be at that last K-12 meeting, so they got to see the learning firsthand, and I know that Director Jorgensen was at the previous K-12 to that and saw the last continuous learning cycle there as well. Okay, so we're going to talk elementary, high level, what we're, more information about what we're doing in elementary, and then secondary, which is middle and high school. And so for elementary, as I think most people know, all teachers K-3 have completed Science of Reading coursework. And we've connected that with foundational skills, resources, and core curriculum. So we know that our core curriculum has those pieces and went through a rigorous process to ensure that. We also know that we wanted to provide, in areas that we were seeing as a district, our students weren't doing as well in supplemental resources to be part of our core. So that's where you see some of those program, those programs, including Hagerty phonemic awareness programs to address phonics and phonemic awareness. And then you can see the list of tier-two and tier-three interventions, and also when we've talked about the need for and the work in dyslexia, some of those programs also support, right, our students that are exhibiting factors that could be indicators of dyslexia. And speaking of that, I had the opportunity at one of the work sessions, again, to talk a little bit more about our dyslexia work. And this is a reminder of that, the number of staff that we have trained, the four clinic sites, the four targeted sites, and additional work that the team is working to, to see for future with more cohorts, more sites, and more in-school and after-school programming. All right, in secondary literacy, so sixth through 12th grade, we have, again, rigorous, very rigorous curricular resources with inquiry, thematic units, embedded assessments, and opportunities to help support scaffolding and extension. Goes back to being able to support text-first planning in those buckets that I talked about earlier. We have coursework in AP, IB, honors coursework, disciplinary literacy, so how you address literacy across disciplines. It's also very cognitive, cognitively challenging. It's really where we have to be headed with students. And we have an intervention program on Language Live that was rolled out last year in our middle schools, started there. We have literacy supports throughout, I just wanted to highlight a few, like none of those pieces wouldn't be possible with our ongoing coaching and support with our area network model, our TLCs, and the data analysis and planning that we're doing, connecting to attaching those resources with the needs of the schools. We also found out that as a district, while we're sure like schools were putting things in place, school by school, to identify and define their literacy block, we didn't, we didn't have a District 11 identified components of a literacy block. So we put that in place, we rolled that out to schools, and are working to have implementation support of that. And there's the ongoing professional development, some of which I've talked about, but we also have, what I would highlight there is the DIBELS VIII assessment training, so that's our early literacy assessment that also is attached to Read Act in the state. And that is a newer version of the assessment that we started off the year with training on at the beginning of the school year. And then also the Science of Reading training that I talked about, that all teachers K-3 were trained in this year. We will also, we have a requirement, and we are supporting the training of special educators, interventionists, and administrators to get that endorsement as well. Secondary content and competency work, so this is specific more to meeting competency goals, and the state requires for graduation requirements, competency in English and mathematics, and demonstration of that. So this is high school work, but really, I, we have developed scope and sequence documents K-8, for instance, in mathematics, and we, that has been a gap at the secondary level in high school, so we are working to do that, so we can say very clearly whatever courses count towards graduation in English and mathematics, that we have a scope and sequence of learning tied to standards with embedded assessments that measure that well. And then you can see our ICAP work, we're continuing that work with tools that support that and connect to the graduate profile. This is also work that's directly connected to our academic master plan, and more tools and work. Valerie Skates, our leader of future-ready, has talked to you about our future center work, and that is directly tied to the work of making sure that all of our students have a plan for the future. We actually just came back from a post-secondary readiness institute, where we got to see schools in San Antonio, Texas, and we're going to steal some of their materials and tools for developing that plan for the future, some like fabulous, exciting things. And then lastly, this actually could have been on the other slide, but tier-two intervention in secondary, that part, it was in the scaffolds for what we're focusing on text-first planning, the, you know, when kids are still learning to read at the secondary level, this implementing, and we just had a group of educators finish this national professional learning and program in, it's called Improving Reader, Reading for Older Students, IROS, put out by Student Achievement Partners, and so we will put another cohort of that through second semester. This just goes back to, hey, again, like that's what we're doing in literacy, high level, big picture, to meet the superintendent and our district goal, the board goal. And so that's the reminder of the goal, but we're also talking about it, again, I mentioned Director Jorgensen was at the November continuous improve, or the, yes, the, not this past month, but the month before, the continuous improvement meeting, where we also reviewed our data, and as a district, we set ambitious goals with students attached to them. So we want to shrink the ground and grow the top, and this is an example of just talking to our schools and our leaders about what does that mean for the over number of kids in our district? What does that mean by school, like what's, what's our share to minimally meet on those We're also working, this is, it's a continued work in progress. We want feedback all the time. The teacher forums that I talked about, that I just came from today, I was at, we just came from, oh my goodness, what school was it? Rudy, it was Rudy. Yes, it was Rudy. And thank you for saying that. And got some great feedback from them. We asked for questions ahead of time, they talked about our professional learning, and then we also, Linda can attest to it, we're working with a professional development task force to get feedback on our surveys there. But here's some of the feedback that we have so far with our current surveys from those professional learnings. So you can see, teachers felt overall, the PD that we've offered district-wide, 82% or higher approval rating, largely positive, lots of compliments to the instructors. There's the areas that we all focus on, just like teachers do, like where do we have to grow? There's the areas we have to grow in, especially at the elementary level, plenty more planning time after PD to be able to really apply. And some of that comes from like elementaries as some of our calendar pieces, but we need to, you know, like they, the amount of PD time they have is less than secondary, so we're continuing to work on, on that. More planned time with grade level and school teams, we have them organized by grade level at the math level, so it's, and it's a matter of that third bullet, how can we further differentiate within areas of expertise, newer, novice to more experienced? How can we continue to do that? And we've already made some adjustments there. For leaders, here's overall feedback. Overall, we've had an 85% or higher approval rating from our leaders, it's helped them approve their ability to perform their role. We're looking at preliminary data from this last K-12 meeting that, again, two of our board members attended, and I think it's even higher. So that's the right trajectory, we want to move in that role way. Our leaders have requested more regular and reoccurring district-led professional development support at their sites. Comments like, wow, can we have this person come out and do this exact same training at our sites? And so, you know, what it's telling us is the people that are doing that work are learning alongside, using their alongside, using their expertise, and they're still saying they need help, they need help and support, and we want to do that, we're in this with them. And then, lastly, they've requested continued ongoing support with PLCs in text-first planning. I think that's it. We're going to pause there and open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Asavado. That was a comprehensive presentation, a lot of information out there for the board and also for the public to digest, you guys are doing some really good work, as Director Jorgensen and I got to witness during that K-12 meeting. Dr. Bankus. Director Bankus.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for implementing the Reading for Older Students. The literacy group to which I belong has encountered students in middle school and high school who have been able to fake it long enough, and then when they get to middle school, they can't do it. So I find this to be very exciting, and I'm very proud of our district for implementing that. I also want to compliment Professional Development for getting a rating of 82% approval rating for the PD, for the professional development, that has been meaningful and that teachers can turn around and put into their classrooms so that it benefits kids, which is a needed piece. And I can see from that the dovetailing into going to the professional development and then coming back and having time in school with peers, so they can say, well, I wrote this, and come and look at how I'm implementing it. Or, I've implemented this, I'm not sure I got done what I needed to do. So those are really important pieces. The other one I wanted to ask about was how to fit all this professional development into the school day or the school year. Sometimes when you take it at the end of the year, you may write these great lesson plans, and then you come back in the fall, and it's been too long. So how does, what's the plan for being effective?
Yeah, that's a really important point, and one of the things that we've worked to mitigate by the way we have ongoing professional development throughout the course of the year. So one of the things that we've done, so we've scoped this out throughout the overall course of the year, we've used the district days that we have to map it to the scope and sequence of learning, and we added, remember, an additional day at the beginning of the school year, because we had one day for district PD at the beginning of the school year, and so we added an additional day to be able to do that. But we have time first semester. Second semester, we have only, we only have that one day in January, and then we have time off, so there's a gap, and then we have a, we had a gap also in first semester. So we've worked to address that by use of our TLCs, that's one of the things that I didn't mention that I should have when I was talking. Our TLCs also, so our leaders get that professional learning, and then our TLCs get it, and they get it more in-depth, and they get more of it, so that they can go back and work within their schools on those areas.
And given that, do then they share with their building principal or assistant principals, the direction in which they're going and what has been learned as part of walkthroughs, as part of feedback from the administrator?
Yes, and that's connected to the area superintendent network model, so the area superintendent is working weekly, is working weekly with, weekly or bi-weekly, they're meeting with their schools, and they're able to talk about implementation and needs within the schools. Also, if you think about, like, with, I know we're talking about literacy, but mathematics, like, planning, right? So it's scoped out for what's coming up with planning. In literacy, sixth through 12th grade, because, you know, obviously by content, teachers are departmentalized, so they can go directly to those PDs and be within their content Elementary is more of a challenge for us PD-wise, because they're teaching all subjects for the majority of teachers, and so we've had to utilize the cascading model, our work with leaders, and then also, we've added in direct-to-teacher for schools that need the training and are ready for it right now. And so we've got 10 to 13 schools getting that direct-to-teacher, it's off the district cycle, you know, connected to what we can actually do, because they teach all subjects, but we have a plan to continue that direct-to-teacher across multiple years, but everybody is getting some form or version of it.
Thank you.
To jump in, Tamara showed that slide really early on with the three objects to the left and three objects to the right, I think they were red and black, I forget the colors, I went way, way back there. It's kind of a dual angled approach now, so instead of just the standard trickle-down professional development, where we bring the principals in once a month and then we expect them to go back, you'll see in breakout rooms at that session, and then even through the course of the week, us sending teams into schools or pulling some educators out of the classroom to get direct-to-teacher professional development that is complementary to this. So we're seeking to not just push resources behind the principal, where the lever of change since No Child Left Behind has been, find good instructional leaders and move on. What we realize is that that only gets us the cyclical nature of the principal, which means new principal, rough first year, okay, second year, move the way up. We have the resources and we have the means, with Tamara's vision and the team that she's brought to bear, to be bringing a lot of these directly to teachers at the same time. And so, as you saw even on the feedback slide, we're getting the feedback not just from what we're delivering to leaders, but from teachers directly. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach with the same goal there of how do we actually bring best first instruction to life, instead of just talking our way around it. And it's been fun to watch and even more fun to see it live, so I appreciate both Director Jorgensen and Director Mel Packham, please come to our principal meetings. I would normally say the first Tuesday of every month, but this January is a little funny, because we have a couple of dates. So what's the date in January? Do you remember?
January 16.
January 16.
That should be a Wednesday.
And I'll get that scheduled to the board through Melissa over a Tesla, it runs for hours, so it's not like you got to be there at 7:30 if you're not a morning person, but it's a great opportunity to see the teams en masse and in small breakout, and then you'll see faces that you don't normally know, and you'll be like, oh, there's some additional staff members that come from schools as well, so.
And the January session will be also a continuous improvement session, because we'll have our mid-year data back, and so we'll go through the data as a district, aligned, you know, connected to, how did we meet with our goals? Did we meet, where are we at on our trajectory to meeting our goals? We'll pull out some promising practices and data cycles and have some school leaders talk about what they're doing really well, connected to their, the growth they've seen in data. And then in literacy, we'll go deeper into that sort of walkthrough tool, the standards tool that you use when you're going to see what you should be seeing in a literacy classroom. So that's what you'd see if you will come next time.
Thank you.
Are you done, Director Bankus?
Oh, yeah, I'm done, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just one more comment on what Director Bankus was talking about, and she was talking about professional development. The calendar for the school year gets approved, I think it comes next month in front of the school board for approval. Hopefully, you are part of that process now, I think last year, you kind of jumped into it in the middle of the thing, and so that way you can schedule the professional development when it is best for our teachers to receive it, maybe it's at the beginning of the year or the middle of the year, that way you schedule it. Hopefully, you are, you know, involved in that, how that calendar is being developed for the future here, for the upcoming year.
Yes, the calendar committee has done some great work, we have a subcommittee off of that committee as well, we were talking about it actually at joint council the other night. We should be on track, we are on track for the January date, we have the next calendar committee meeting coming up next Monday, this coming Monday, and we've worked to address professional learning embedded throughout the course of the year, just with district days, we're working to look at elementary issues specifically to try to get closer to that. So I think we will have an improved calendar that with, we'll have some approved recommendations, I think that group will, to bring to the board for your consideration.
Director Jorgensen.
I'll be brief. I did appreciate the data that Dr. Kay shared at the November 7th meeting. I mean, it was worth celebrating and applauding, I found myself wanting to applaud, but then, like, why are we not all celebrating this, I mean, decreased summer slide in data for the beginning of the year, like, across all grade levels? I mean, it was, it was great data, and so the fact that, I think I've heard some promising news from our, you know, MOIs, mid-year data, but I can't wait to see that in January. But basically, just, you know, those principal meetings, I've found, and this was part of my board reports, I'll save the time now, just so effective in, you know, putting everything together, influencing our admin to go to their buildings and communicate the good things that are working, you know, getting the feedback from buildings, bringing it to that space and going, here's what my teachers are struggling with, as you mentioned, pushing supports, you know, I've gotten to see that literacy coach twice now in both meetings work, and what a phenomenal facilitator you have for that literacy program, just phenomenal. But to Mr. Gall's point of just, there's no waiting game, you know, we're pushing in supports and, you know, we're helping, and you try it, you fail, you learn, you move on, you try something else, and that's just what we need. I mean, we can't, we can't wait any more time, and I think that you guys are all on that same messaging, and I'm just very excited to see the results, so, thank you.
Yeah, our leaders and our teachers are highest, like, they're our biggest asset, connected to, like, they're all in, in the work, and it is a lot to implement, and it's very rigorous, and it's hard, just like we are asking our kids to do, we're asking our kids to be engaged to that level, yeah.
Director Heffley.
I appreciate your presentation, I just had a quick question. As a former high school teacher, we were always concerned with the middle school, high school connection, so is there, in terms of content-specific PD, is there any plan in the future for something to have time between middle school and high school teachers?
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. We need to, I would say we need to do more of that. I think our area superintendents and the networks, you know, they've worked to do that within their network teams, but I also think, like, at this, this last K-12 session that we did, we're trying to have different models of collaboration. So at this last meeting, we had the K-12 literacy learning happen all together, so they, they used the texts and the pieces that were specific to their level, because, you know, if I'm at high school, I'm not going to do, I'm not going to work on a third grade text, right? Like, but they were able to hear the discussion, and that was nice, because then you could see how it unfolds, elementary through high school. We also, I believe we also did this for that continuous improvement planning session, so when we're looking at the data and then we're lifting up best practices, promising practices that we're seeing, we allowed, you know, principals could select what groups they went to, and so that was mixed as well, but I think, I think you're, I believe you're right on, we could, we could work to do that even better, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Director Carey.
Can you go to the slide where it has feedback from the teachers themselves, please?
Sure.
One, yeah, there we go. Excuse me. So I just want to highlight one piece of feedback here and tag off of something that Director Bankus said, which is that you have, you know, it's really common to have exciting professional development, and then the summer passes, and then you've kind of forgotten how it works, and things kind of default to the way that things were. And as a teacher myself, who's been in a lot of professional development trainings and been excited by the ideas, I just really want to emphasize that, you know, if the ideas don't percolate down to the actual classroom, whether or not they enjoyed the briefing is a little immaterial, so I would really just emphasize this specific piece of feedback. I know teacher time is precious, but please think about whether there are ways that you can give teachers time to actually, you know, plan and act on the information that you're giving them, and it sounds great, but, you know, again, if it can't, if it doesn't make it into the classroom, then...
Yeah, couldn't agree more. One of the things that we led off the year in our leadership symposium, which also was a first, first-time implementation, so when we brought our leaders together, and I think some board members were at that at the beginning of the year, actually, I think we might have said it again at the end of the year, I'm pretty sure we did, in May, but we put, had some common commitments that we said we would make as a district and for every school. And part of that was to have collaborative planning occurring, to have observation and feedback cycles in place, and to have data cycles in place weekly, to have those things. Our area superintendents then made sure that they, that those things were identified in each of those buildings on days. So couldn't agree with you more, that is the work to make sure that what they're learning actually goes into the planning, and then actually, we see it in the classroom. And what I mentioned about the walkthrough, I hate to say walkthrough tool, but people understand that better, because it's not a checklist, right? It's really, but that, that tool that we're training on, that we introduced, that will be another tool that will get at what you're saying, right? Because we're going in to see it in practice within classrooms, it's not just, you got this great PD, what are we actually seeing in classrooms?
Thank you.
Director Bankus, do you have a follow-up question?
I forgot to ask, I was really impressed with the fact that we have 34-plus teachers who are trained or being trained in teaching through dyslexia skills, and so I'm assuming those are primarily elementary teachers.
Yes.
Yes. And so my question is, do other teachers come in to watch, or do other teachers who are not trained come in to see how it works? Because I think that would be a valuable opportunity for new strategies and for teachers to be interested in learning new strategies. So do you have any anecdotal information on how those teachers are being received in their schools and if they're, I know they can't share, because it's a training, I mean, it's very specific.
Yeah, but if they have any opportunities within their school environments to actually see that process or to learn from within, I can follow up on that, I actually don't know the answer to that question, so I can follow up on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, like, we're also, you know, in trying to expand, we're looking at how do we, even more so in secondary, apply that base level of work with dyslexia specifically at the secondary level, even more of an increased focus, it's not like, it's not occurring at all, but, yes. Yep.
Director Nelson, you have the last word.
So that was one of my questions, dyslexia at the secondary level, do we have anything currently in place, or is that coming? Like, it's, we know that it's a need, and we'll get there, it's just taking time.
We have, you know, there's site-specific things that are happening in terms of the district strategy to ensure that base level...
At the secondary level?
Yeah, what we're, at the secondary level, what we're working on is a plan, I'm trying to get to the coursework, so some of the intervention programming they're talking about, so when I talked about the dyslexia program at one of the work sessions, one of the things I mentioned at the elementary level is all schools have access to intervention program that's connected to support students that have indicators on the spectrum of dyslexia, and they have a trained individual, at least one trained individual in it, that's the next level of work with middle and high.
Okay.
Middle first, but, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So currently, all...
Because we have staff in place, I'm sorry, we have identified positions in place that lend itself to that.
Okay. So all elementary schools do have a person that is trained in dyslexia, did I hear that correctly?
They have a person that's trained, connected to a resource that supports a Tier Two or Tier Three intervention for a student that, in our screening, is presenting like they could have, you know, they have indicators of...
At all elementary schools, and then we're working towards it for the secondary.
Yeah, yeah, that's our, that's our tier one, all of them have access.
Okay, and I guess, I attended a dyslexia...
Okay. And I guess, I attended a dyslexia breakout session at the CASB conference, and I was wishing you were there, because I was thinking, she would love this. But they were sharing, they're more focused on that K-through-five level, and when asked about what they're doing for secondary, they, they hadn't really figured it out yet. So I've been wondering myself what our plan is for that. But they also were providing PD for all of their K-through-five staff on dyslexia. And it, you know, maybe it's not to the level of becoming a CALP or a CULT, but just a, here's what it is. It can affect up to 20% of the population. And I would just really love for us, I think, I don't know if maybe this would be an ask that I bring up in the future agenda items section, just a better understanding for myself on how our PD works. And, you know, I know we've given extra days, but I personally don't, and maybe I just need to meet with you on my own time, but, you know, what is it that we say this is required versus here you can choose what you spend your PD time on?
Yeah.
But I would love for us to have dyslexia be a focus across K-through-12. And I don't care if you're a gym teacher or a band teacher, I mean, I think all of us could learn more about this diagnosis, or, like I said, affects up to 20% of the population. So I think it could really help boost our literacy scores within the district if we just, like, doubled down on that specifically. So I'll just put that out there as a, as a proposal. Can you go back to the org chart slide? Can you just help me understand what of these groups are new to reporting under academics? Because I think several of them, am I correct?
Instructional technology and library science is, was a new change that Superintendent Gall put into place. I think he represented the board at the, in the spring.
Yeah.
And professional development. So those are the ones that moved into academics.
Okay.
The others existed.
And those were in two different phases. We started the year moving professional development over, we did that last year.
Yeah.
And then this year, we brought over Melissa Smeed and team with the, with the LTEs. We also broke apart what used to be students SSE, SSW, and they're now listed in two separate, which is SSW is now future-ready, and Valerie's leading that work, and Chris is now in student engagement. And then the other change that's on here is when we hired Deirdre, which was to lead special ed. We decided to make that to lead special populations, based upon the breadth of her resume and experience that she brought in to bear.
But, so like Valerie's team didn't use to report under academics, is that correct?
Yeah, just the two teams moved, instructional technology and library science from different divisions and professional, and professional development. The rest were in academics, they were reorganizations within.
Got it. Okay. I mean, I think it, it makes a lot of sense to me to make that movement. I love that you did that, and I hope that it's working well for you. Now we're managing more. Can you speak a little bit to, I know we have, can you just speak a little bit to staffing, and are there, like, more positions now in any, in academics? And then I know we're bringing in a lot of different consultants, and just, can you give just a little bit better understanding of what that looks like?
The majority, so like, what you're seeing specifically in academics, the majority of the work was repurposing of positions to align to the best-first instruction, to be able to have the infrastructure to, to do the work. So the majority was repurposing. We did, like, there was huge, huge need in secondary, like, that, that we just didn't, you know, like, when you're doing work K-12, part of, part of what I saw, like, with the coursework, which, which we're moving on, is having staff that's able to have the expertise and be able to develop out those materials to, for true competency with scope and sequence documents and coursework and syllabi. And so there are, like, ways that we've used current funding to be able to have that, and we didn't have that before in, you know, outside of our general funds, but just, I think, like Title IV. But, so, we've reallocated how we use positions and how we've used funding to be able to hit the weak areas and provide for the new structure. I don't know if that's getting at what you're asking.
No, you are, yeah. You magically got there without me explaining it very well. I'm thinking in terms of some of the mid-year budget requests that are coming, and, and I know previous contracts we've awarded for additional outside support, which is wonderful. I'm thinking in terms of it being, like, non-recurring dollars that's helping pay for some of that. And so how do we just make this sustainable, you know? So I was kind of wanting to help understand, what of this is, like, already FTE that is out of the general fund and we're good to go? And what if this is, and I'm not asking you to answer right now, I guess it's just more of putting it out there as we build our budget for next year. How do we just continue on with all of this really great support that we have, and think strategically about making it sustainable versus using that non-recurring dollars? Because I, and it's great that we have the money to put towards it, but I want to make it last. So...
Yeah, I think just to jump in there, as we've done with most, or actually all of our contracts that we've briefed over the last couple of weeks, the goal in all of these relationships is to continue to train our staff to be able to make these internal and sustainable. I believe that Tamara and her team have done a phenomenal job in finding the right subject matter expertise to accelerate the learning inside the district. And I'll tell you that again, if you come to the principal's meeting, you'll see, as Director Jorgensen commented, on the second time he's seen Catherine, right, Catherine Black, is her name? Katie, does she go by?
Kathy.
Kathy, thank you. On her text-first planning is, is just not a capacity that we were able to bring to bear. And so using those non-recurring dollars strategically to not be, not just be able to deliver the content, but then also to have the staff there surrounded to be able to pick this up.
Yeah.
And so if I shift that, because text-first planning is a big focus this year, if I go back a year, and you see of how we've made most of our math work internal, right? We have, you know, we call them the Paul Phil team, and there are many more that are associated with that. They too benefited, benefited from outside support last year in consultancies. And now you can't walk into particularly a middle school without bumping into one or the other one of them, running up and down the hallway, doing some of that teacher-specific training that I talked about earlier on their own. So the goal is always to have a graduated relationship where we're learning to be able to take on those new capacities by ourselves. But, but these are new strategies that the district had not adopted in the past. And so it does require us to make that strategic investment of non-recurring dollars to be able to then learn that specialty ourself.
Yeah, that's great. It reminds me of another presentation that Ms. Otmer gave where...
The design thinking.
Yeah.
Which was...
I can't remember what it was called, but just helping us all to learn these skills that then we can have it embedded.
We've got tremendously talented people, and we're building their knowledge and skill and capacity connected to their already developed knowledge. And we've got teacher leaders are training to do the math cohort work. We've got our current staff that, that are doing phenomenal work. So...
Yeah, that's great. Okay, my last question. Can you speak a little bit more to that literacy block piece? Like, give me some examples of what that is. I, it's on slide 17, if that's helpful.
Yeah, we just, like, basically, for the amount of, like, an identified amount, I'll give you just big picture, high level. And we could always go deeper into it, like, offline. But big picture is, what's the chunk of time for literacy? What we define by literacy in general terms is where they're doing reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and then, and foundational skills. And what are, so those components of the time and how much time within, when each of those. So we're, like, really defining what, what are the components of a literacy block? What's the amount of time? And we did the same for mathematics as well. It just, we, we just didn't have that, and it, it was something that, that needed, we needed to have.
Yeah.
So, like a schedule, like, when you're scheduling time for...
That would be a component of a literacy block.
Well, a schedule would be an example, what you might see for the scheduled-out time of literacy. So in literacy, you're gonna, you're gonna see time for writing, you're gonna see time for deeply engaging in the text, right? You're gonna have time for deep engagement in foundational pieces with phonemic awareness. So what are the chunks of time within the block?
Got it. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good job.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation, and thanks for all the staff for being here to, there was a lot of information that you presented out there. Thank you. Moving on, public comments. Ms. Olson, do we have any public comments? Thank you. The holiday season and the spirit of giving, we don't have any public comments, so we keep the board meetings proceeding. Special reports, board member reports, are there any reports by board directors? Okay. Director Art.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to my fellow directors, Director Bank, as Director Nelson, Director Jorgensen, and Director Malpakam, or President Malpakam, who were able to make it to the CASB conference. And I know in the future, you other two folks will hopefully be able to come as well. Just, there were a lot of things to learn, and so many possible presentations, and I'm glad we could all attend a few. And hopefully, some of the ideas will continue to percolate. Thanks to Director Nelson for sharing some already. And also, again, in support of our students, hopefully, we'll be able to continue that. The, the interest, there might be interest in what the students were talking about for the speaker that they heard, and it was Alex Sheen, and he runs a nonprofit called Because I Said I Would. And it was just an interesting presentation. We also heard from Liz Murray, who did, who was homeless at one time in her life, and her life story is, to date, is summarized in a Lifetime Channel movie called From Homeless to Harvard. And so it was just a good conference, and thanks for coming. And I think that's it. Well, to Superintendent Gall's point earlier, the breakfasts are fabulous that we're having for staff, and hopefully, if we haven't been to your school, hopefully, we'll be to your school soon. But some of them, I think, are out all the way to April for scheduling.
Yeah, they're two a week until we get them all.
Right, right. So it might be a while. Thank you.
It's a lot of veggie cheese.
Director Art, those keynote speaker presentations, do they get posted on the CASB website where we can access it after we log on to it? Just curious, for the board members that didn't attend or anything like that, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not certain that they are. The, Alex Sheen, certainly, he's, he's been on, doing TED Talks several times, probably Liz Murray is as well. So if folks are interested, they could find that information there. But I don't know that CASB's recorded them or not.
Yeah. Well, thank you for sharing about Alex Sheen, because I said I would, as I was exiting that keynote speaker, there was a long line of people waiting to get his autograph and his book signed. And it was really an inspiring speak, so, inspiring speech. So for board members that want to maybe check him out, TED Talk, his name is Alex Sheen, you may be able to find out, find out some of his inspirational speech. I'll make my presentation quick, because this has already all had been talked about. These are the five students on the top left that you can see, that they were there for that keynote speaker. And Dordy, J.R.O.T.C., were also present at the CASB for the Presentation of Colors. They were there the previous night for the board meeting, the next day morning, they were up there, I think. So it was good to see them out there. And then the breakfast pictures that you see up there, if you can move on to the next slides. It was good to engage with our students. Again, I want to thank the Russell Middle School Choir, who was up here last board meeting outside in the lobby area, and that they did a fantastic Christmas holiday season songs up there. And we already talked about the breakfast for our staff, and this was at the Pendro staff breakfast, where Superintendent Gall was handing out the elevator award to the imaginary teacher who was right by his right arm out there, because the teacher wasn't present out there. So, but the, the teacher was not present at the school that day. But just like it's been said so many times, I've not attended all of them, I've been in a few of them. Everyone that I've attended, teachers have appreciated, just, you know, small token of our gratitude for all the work that they get done. All the teachers that I've had time to talk with out there, they come up and say, thank you for showing that appreciation for the work that they do. So it was good that you brought that in, Superintendent Gall. Moving on to the next slide. And this was piggybacking on the Carver and Edison. I wanted to give a big shout out to Pike's Peak United Way. So Pike's Peak United Way is going to be presenting two gifts for every one of our students at Carver and Edison. I think Edison is happening this Friday, and Carver is happening this upcoming Tuesday. So all board members got the invite for that. There was a wrap event out there where we got invited, Carver being my school, got invited, sent me an invite. When I say my school, that's the school that I was assigned to visit. And we got the opportunity, the community was there, several people from the community got to wrap all these gifts that kids will get to open this upcoming Friday and the following Tuesday. Moving on to the last slide, and this Superintendent Gall has already talked about this, new D-11 Facebook page. I know the past couple of weeks, we've gone through some ups and downs turmoil, but this Facebook page got live, if I correct Ms. Wise, just this morning. And when I checked this afternoon, we already have, what, 1,300 followers out there and a little over 1,000 likes. I wish I can get that kind of engagement on my Facebook page in 12 hours. So we use the Facebook page for communicating a lot of information, especially with weather delays and stuff like that. So I encourage our community to come and sign up or log in, or like the page and follow the page, so you can get that information delivered to you in a timely manner. And the last thing that I want to say is happy holidays. I know that our staff have been working really hard for the last three or four months, and hopefully, all of you get an opportunity to take a breather over the next couple of weeks, including board members, just getting to spend some time with your loved ones and families. And hope your holidays are peaceful, and then we will get to see you in the new year. Thank you. Moving on, adoption of consent items. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are E2, approval of November 29, 2023 special meeting minutes; E3, approval of December 6, 2023 special meeting minutes; E4, approval of personnel recommendations, December 13, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankes?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakam?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Art?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been adopted. Moving on to the action items, there are no contract awards, there are no budget transfer, transfers, appropriations, or FTE approval. With that, moving on to the non-action item, we have a couple of policies that are up on the agenda, policy KBBA and policy EFAG. Let's start with policy KBBA. Superintendent Gall, this is new information.
Dr. X?
Dr. X.
Good evening, Superintendent Gall, President Malpakam, members of the board, new members of the board. Welcome back. of the board. Um, welcome back. Um, policy K B A A and regulation K B A A dash R, custodial and non-custodial parent rights, is being introduced this evening for adoption per Caspi recommendation. This policy and regulation provide practices for schools and parents to work together when there are legal child custody requirements. These practices include safeguarding student data privacy, outlining steps for student safety, and procedures for accurately enrolling students in our schools. Apologies for the regulations showing up redlined twice. Uh, thank you, Director Art and Treasurer Nelson for bringing that to our, my attention today. Um, yeah, a little background on this one. Uh, we do have, unfortunately, a number of times, there's our, there are custody issues that are legally written out in court paperwork, and that court paperwork can become very, very important when we enroll students, when we're talking about student information. We want to make sure that we're giving the support where we need to, uh, when those parents are identified as custodial and non-custodial. This gives guidance to our registrars, uh, both Central Office for Enrollment, as well as at the school, on practices that we, that we, we need to follow.
Okay. Any questions from board directors? I see Dr. Bankus.
Yes, I just have one. Um, in the, in the last line of paragraph two, it says, um, district and school administration and staff shall follow the instructions of the parent with whom the child primarily resides during a normal school week. And I don't, and there are some situations where a child will be with a parent for three days one week, and then the following week, it'll only be two days, where the parents flip-flop. So I'm unclear on who does a, how do we guide the administration to contact the right parent?
Usually, in those types of situations, that's laid out inside the paperwork. Uh, so if it's that, we, we would then follow what would be laid, laid out inside that paperwork to contact that parent in that given week.
So in the paperwork, it'll say, um, this parent needs to be contacted first? Is that what you're saying?
No, in a situation, it might say that on this, this week, it's with this parent, and on this week, it's with this parent.
Thank you.
It can get that detailed.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board directors on this policy? Director Haley?
What happens then when there's a miscommunication? Cause that's gonna happen at some point, where the non-custodial shows up and wants to take their child, and they're not supposed to be taking their child. What's the plan for that?
Yeah, our schools um will make sure that both parents are contacted in that case. And if it's the custodial parent, uh, they'll refer to that paperwork. Uh, and if need be, they'll contact um Central Administration for support on that.
I'd just like to comment, commend the staff that may or may not be listening on the great work they've done to navigate some of the challenging situations. I see um our, our chief security lead, David Allison, the back there, who's been called on, on a couple of occasions. Uh, it can be very contentious and very difficult. I think the clarity, trying to get more clarity in the policy is helpful. Um, we default to the letter of the law, and the good news is that in most cases, the letter of the law is extremely detailed. Uh, it is that vague and that, that gray time period in between. Um, I like, sometimes there's a verbal before the court order becomes final, and we're waiting for that paperwork. And to the day, every one of the complaints that has come to me has been resolved, uh, within reason by the staff and/or the Central Office staff being able to make those back phone calls to, to figure it out. You know, we seek to be able to provide our parents the appropriate rights to their children while protecting the children until we can figure out what those rights are.
Director Nelson?
I just wanna say thank you to you and the team for working this out. I sat on some of those committee meetings where you were discussing this policy, and it was a lot of back and forth. So just thanks for the hard work everybody put in on, on both of these tonight.
Thank you. So this policy, policy K B B A, can this be moved to consent by show of thumbs? Okay. We move that to consent, Ms. Olson. Moving on to the next policy that's on the agenda, which is policy E E A G, transportation and private vehicles. Back to you, Dr. X.
Policy E E A G, transportation and private vehicles is being revised to enhance student safety protocols. The revision, the major revision before you this evening involves preliminary background checks, I'm sorry, background checks is the standard for transporting a student in private vehicles and replaces the language with extensive criminal background check. This policy would apply to staff and district volunteers who use private vehicles for transportation.
Thank you. Did something specifically trigger this revision?
I'm sorry.
Like, what, yeah, what prompted the revision from, yeah, preliminary background check to extensive criminal background check?
Just uh, the safety of our students and the, the level that's involved with, with when a student is in a pri, in a private vehicle.
Okay. Director Nelson?
That was kind of my question, too. Did this come at this time just because of the cycle, the rotation that we try and bring policies along, or somebody thought, hey, let's elevate this at this time?
It was a, it was a revision that was suggested by um our Risk Department.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Just curious.
Okay. We want to keep our students safe, so let's do extensive criminal background check before they're transported in private vehicles. Um, seeing no further questions, show of thumbs, move this to consent. Okay. Thank you, Dr. X. Happy holidays to you. Moving on to the mill levy, uh, next agenda item, mill levy rate certification. And again, this is new information, Superintendent Gaul. I see Dr. Comfort already.
Dr. Comfort?
Dr. Comfort.
Good evening, board. Thanks for the opportunity. I will be joined momentarily by Senior Executive Director Laura Heronik. She was still grinding in spreadsheets in her office just a few moments ago. Um, I wanna first uh start with uh two apologies for tonight. So number one, the traditional mill levy rate certification process is typically very quick. Um, it's usually because it's required by statute, we go through it pretty quickly. This year, it is going to be a little more complicated, so I will take a little more time. I also want to acknowledge that in one of my data sets, I uh unintentionally inverted some data labels. The data is accurate, the data came from Ms. Heronik, but I, I switched the headers, and I will explain why I think that I did that subconsciously in just a moment. Uh, before we get too far into the process, I do wanna um first just do a little bit of context and background. Um, as the board knows, in District 11, we have the benefit of having two mill levy overrides. Um, there are three types of mill levy overrides in existence. We have two of the three. So our 2,000 mill levy override is what we call a fixed dollar amount. That $26,998,822 never changes. It was that in 2001, and it will be that in 2030. That amount never changes. Um, then we transition to our 2017 mill levy override. You can see the ballot questions here with, uh, so I apologize for all of the text, uh, but I wanted to make sure that the entire ballot language was noted. And you'll see that it says fixed dollar plus inflation amount. So in 2017, the administration and board were wise, um, to acknowledge that costs do not stay the same. And so as we uh put things in the mill levy override, they become more expensive over time. And so the district and the voters approve that we can take, and we have taken, inflation at a, at an amount set by the state every single year, um, if the board so chooses. And so that'll be one of the things that we, we have a conversation tonight. But I wanted to acknowledge that it is very clearly labeled and voted on in the 2017 ballot question. Just for the board's reference, there is a third type of mill levy override called a fixed mill. Um, and so that means that depending on property values, uh, the mill can be worth a lot more or a lot less. Those are very rare, but they can exist. So if you heard narratives over the past couple of months, as we were entering into election season, about your mill levy being worth 20 or 30% more, you would have to have a fixed mill. District 11 does not have, uh, does not have that. Okay. Mill levy rate certification. So here is the traditional process. Typically, over Thanksgiving break, the finance office receives the mill levy rates, uh, and we have to certify those traditionally by December 15th. And so Ms. Heronik gets a, gets it over Thanksgiving break, she gets it all ready, she comes to you in non-action and action, and everything's good. Um, typically, El Paso County Assessor provides the certification of the total assessed value of our district, again, prior to the end of Thanksgiving. Um, and typically, those assessed values are very, very consistent with the August projections. So there might be very small changes, but we typically know almost to the exact dollar what we're gonna have. And so there's no surprises. Then we enter into this year. Um, obviously, with the increase uh in property values, the district average was 24.8. We've rounded that to 25% in terms of our district assessed value increases. This year, because of those things, there was a special legislative session called. Um, they have given us the, the grace of extending that deadline of certification to January 10th. That provides a little bit of a challenge for our district, because there's not a whole lot of board meetings between now and January 10th, um, which brings me to you tonight with not completely, uh, we don't know the information to a T quite yet. Um, what we know from El Paso County is that they're going to give us that information between December 20th and December 31st. We heard today that we're not looking good for the early side of that window. Um, and so what that means is, uh, Ms. Heronik and, and our team will, will be doing that maybe when Santa's coming down the chimney. Um, the special legislative session, SB 23B 001 resulted in two key changes that ultimately benefited our tax base. Number one, they changed the residential assessment rate from 6.765 to 6.7. It was already set in law that it was gonna reduce, I believe, from 6.9 to 6.765, so they reduced that a little more. They also reduced all residential property values by $55,000. Um, and so regardless of your property value, they said for your tax rate, you get to cut $55,000 off of that amount. Okay. So that leads us into where we are right now with our models, and these, this is where my, my air exists. So where I say average estimate one and average estimate two, I would appreciate, I will absolutely correct this and re-upload it, I would appreciate it if the board would invert those. Um, here's why I think I made that mistake subconsciously. And I've talked to Ms. Heronik about this dozens of times. It makes sense to me that when your property value decreases, your taxes would then for decrease as well. That's not accurate. Um, and so because, as our assessed value increases, because we have basically fixed dollar amounts, we have to, we can charge less mills. And so the D11 portion actually can be a reduction. Okay? So I know that. I know that, and I talked to Ms. Heronik about it over and over again, and I just still did that on, on the spreadsheet, so I apologize. Um, but so what you see here is, is ultimately our best guess, and we have two models. And those models are based on what surrounding districts are doing, as well as what we have already seen play out um across the state. And so the first, well, I'm gonna flip it, uh, but where I say average estimate one, when we look at our census, we have roughly 100,000 homes in the District 11 boundaries, and we multiplied that by the $55,000 reduction, as well as applying the new tax rate. And so you'll see on the right, uh, for a 200,000, 300,000, 400,000, 500,000 dollar house, and assuming their, their property increases, what would happen to their taxes. So what you'll see is that if your house currently is $375,000 or less, your D11 portion actually will go down again, because as assessed values go up, we, we don't have to charge as many mills. And then you'll see that as house, uh, housing prices increases, there are, there can be increases, um, but they're, they're not necessarily substantial. This is for the year. Uh, you'll also see that there's two estimates there. We, we modeled out two things. The board choosing to levy a 5% inflation or an 8% inflation, and you can see the difference. So that was one model. The other model that is titled 5% reduction from August projection, there are currently five counties across the state who have already certified their mills. Now, most of them are rural, Pueblo County is also one of them, and what we're seeing from them is an average of 5%. What we're hearing from the county is that the reduction might actually be less than 5%. And so, in our opinion, that 9% reduction is a worst-case scenario at this point in time. Because again, if the, if the reduction is less than 5%, that means assessed values are even closer to their original values, which means the district reduces its mills even more, resulting in more, in more property tax relief. Okay? Again, just two things to note. We assumed a 25% increase. Obviously, not every single household saw a 25% increase. Some saw more, some saw less, but that is the average for the district, as well as knowing that residential properties make up 84% of, of the district's tax base. Okay? Uh, a, a little more information. We do not know as much detail on commercial property, uh, but what we do know is it makes up 13% of our, our district tax base. Uh, while there were no direct impacts of, of SB 23B 001, um, there was already a reduction in tax rate that was planned, and that is going from 29% to 27.9. And commercial properties, similar to residential properties, automatically have a $30,000 reduction off of their, off of their property value. We, we cannot project property values as accurately as we can for residential units, so that's why we don't have a table up there with um really clear projections. But we fill with the assessment rate reduction, as well as the $30,000 reduction, that they, they should both help offset some of the real or market value increases. Okay. And then I just wanna note, because part of this conversation is the inflation decision from the board. Um, we modeled out exactly how much inflation we would get. Uh, we have already built into this year's budget, assumed a 2% inflation. We can obviously uh go up to 8%. Historically, the board has uh moved forward with a full inflation amount every year. But you'll see there, the amounts that we would get in addition to our MLO um for each percentage of, of increase in inflation. And you'll see over there on the right, traditionally, what our MLO inflation allows us to do, it'll, it allows us to protect our general fund. Because we already, our, our general fund already has to do significant backfill on our MLO specifically around salaries and benefits. So, if in the 2000 MLO, we said $1 million can get you 40 teachers, well, that was true in 2000. That is no longer even close to being true. And so as, as salary and benefit increases, the general fund is what comes in and, and backfills that. So that inflation allows for us to protect the general fund to provide other salary and benefit increases, or new programs, or address other needs. With that, I turn it over to the board for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarity, too, on those two estimates that you have out there. Um, it's easy to get confused, but I see your point. Uh, thank you. I mean, this is really clear, not only for the board, but also for the community. Director Nelson?
Yeah, I just would like to speak to that point you just made about our general fund sometimes have to compensate for this MLO uh items that we have said we're going to put money towards. And so that's where the 2017 MLO, having this inflation factor, is such a benefit, and that, that board was kind of forward-thinking in, in the committee in helping uh put that in place, so that that's lessened, the general fund compensating is lessened. So, um, I just wanna speak to the fact that we are able to take 8%, and um, Dr. Comfort provided us of the presentation with the slide of the 5% versus 8% numbers. And that was coming from a place of my asking, can we see how an 8% hit really impacts a household? And, you know, are we talking a few dollars? Are we talking tens of dollars, hundreds of dollars? What does that even look like? And so, um, I think it's helpful to see the difference, that, you know, for a $200,000 home, it's a matter of $4 difference from the 5% to the 8%. Oh, yeah, thank you. I was looking at my computer. Um, so it, it just helps us to have a better understanding of what impact we're having on our families and our community, and um, just being able to make a informed decision. We are fully able to take that 8% inflation increase, and um, I do think that's the right thing to do. But it is helpful to see, if we were to take less, what impact that has on our families, so.
Thank you. Director Carey?
This is a very quick question. The numbers on these slides for the estimated change in tax for households, is this annual?
It is annual.
Yes.
Any further questions from the board at this time? Okay, so, uh, just, uh, so the board is aware of that timeline. This all has to be um approved or adopted by the board by January, or do you need it even before then?
Yeah, we, we have to have it submitted by January 10th, so unfortunately, we will have to do it on January 3rd.
Okay. So January 3rd is the Wednesday, um, and we cannot wait till the January 10th evening to have this adopted, because you need to submit it.
It has to be submitted and certified by, by end of day on, on January 10th.
When does schools reopen? Do you know? 8th, January 8th?
Yeah.
So we got to have a board meeting prior to that, on January 3rd? So we got to have a board meeting prior to that on January third?
That is that is our understanding now, sir. I I am, well, we have discussed if this continues to get delayed, that hopefully the state would provide additional relief. We just haven't heard that yet. So at this point in time, in order to be in alignment with statute, we would have to do it on the third.
Okay, so we have a couple of options here. We would have to, keeping on the Wednesday schedule, January third would be when we can call, I can call a board meeting if the board is good with that. But if board members are not going to be available because it's the middle of the holidays, then we would have to call a special meeting on January eighth, for example. That would be the Monday on a special meeting to have the specific item on the agenda so that the board can approve it. So we can have that discussion after the fact and see if, you know, you guys have any conflicts. Yes, we can certainly do that. Director Bankus, you had a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I I just want to make, say out loud on this chart. For somebody who has, was assessed, was assessed at two hundred thousand dollars, collectible in twenty twenty-three, if we, if we agree that we're going to take the full eight percent, their tax rate will go down fifty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. And for three hundred thousand, it's going to go down ten dollars and three cents. And it's counterintuitive, so I fully appreciate how you've laid this out for us.
Yeah, that that fifty-five thousand dollar reduction can have a very significant impact on on more affordable housing.
Yeah. So that fifty-five thousand dollar reduction, I asked you this question at that time, is this only for this year? Or is that for perpetuity? Do we know that?
I I haven't heard that it continues.
Okay.
I think we all.
Laura doesn't know, me, nobody, nobody knows if Laura doesn't know.
Okay. We figured it out.
We believe it's temporary.
Yeah, it's temporary.
Reading of that.
And this is in addition to the senior exemption, is that correct?
It is in in addition, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We we believe there, the calendar shows a work session on January third.
Yeah.
So it would be a special meeting on the front or the back end of the work session on January third.
Okay.
Right.
I do apologize for the timeline, board.
Okay. Is there anything else Ms. Heronick has to add to this conversation?
We're definitely going with eight percent.
Oh, yeah, that's what the board has to decide. Is the board comfortable in having that conversation at this point in time to give them some type of feedback as to which direction the board is leaning in? As we saw in this document that is up there comparing, if you can just go back to that previous slide, even with that imposing the full eight percent, which is the last column, and if you are going with the nine percent reduction, that's the worst case scenario, a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home, your property taxes still go down. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it goes down five hundred thousand and six hundred and twenty-five thousand. It goes up thirty-seven dollars in a year, so that's three dollars in a month, and eighty-four dollars in a year for a six hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's about seven dollars a month. So that's what we are looking at. So is the board comfortable going with eight percent or the last slide where you showed the various things, three to eight percent, whatever? Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, I I'm very happy to see these numbers because coming up to this conversation, for those that don't know, all the caro board members got a, an email from Governor Polis about how proposition HH failed and asking local control to adjust their mills to to help provide relief for for property owners. And so, you know, I was concerned about what this would look like, but seeing these numbers here, I appreciate it. And I think that the thing that to add context is, you know, if if we were where we were two years ago in having this conversation, and nothing to do with pandemic, but just with the fact that we had a large general fund, and we were saying, hey, we're going to levy the full inflation piece on there and just, you know, have to backfill less and have more money sitting in our 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 reserve tank, it would be fiscally not prudent. But because of the work that we have done in deploying our general fund, our reserve dollars to new fields, to security vestibules, to pre Ks, to after-school tutorings, to to things that are, you know, doing what we said we'd do in two thousand seventeen's mill levy that we brought to the voters, coupled with the the amounts that I see here at various levels of home value, which we have, you know, below and above in in our district, I see it reasonable to to levy the eight percent because of our fiscal prudence, putting the monies back into schools, record high raises for our district last year. We are using your 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 mills and your your tax increases wisely. And so I see the justification for having the eight percent.
If I if I could respond real quick, Director Jorgensen, I appreciate you bringing up the the governor's message. I do want to acknowledge for the community that if we were to consider a reduction in our general fund levy, not only is that against statute, but the state does not come in and backfill whatever we would reduce. And they do a dollar-for-dollar reduction from our allocation. So it's, I don't know, double or triple whammy. And so that that just isn't a viable option, I don't think, for any school district, but especially District eleven.
Are any school districts doing that general?
I I've heard of a few who were considering it, and once they heard that information, I I believe they quickly changed their mind.
Thank you. So we have one percent, Director Jorgensen, you shared your thoughts on the inflation or where you're leaning towards. Director Nelson.
I'll just add that I attended another CASB breakout session, and this topic came up. And another point that was made was there is uncertainty if in the future districts can revert back, like if there's going to be a mechanism to go back to where they were before. So that also is why many school districts are shying away from the request.
Okay, so since you, Ms. Heronick asked for that feedback from the board, as collectively as a board, starting with that eight percent, which Director Jorgensen expressed support for, are we comfortable as a board providing that feedback to the administration so they can work those numbers when they have that assessed valuation figures from El Paso County? Eight percent, are we good with that? Okay, you've got the support?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have future agenda item request, request for new agenda items from board members at this time. Yeah, future agenda item and task request. Director Bankus.
The danger of attending things like the Bosse's conference is that you learn all these new things. And in that keynote speaker, we heard an awful lot about AI. I would like a work session where we can actually put our hands on AI because one of the things that I would propose, if it works the way I understood it during that keynote, I would like it to, I would like the board to consider and and have a conversation around taking our board policies category by category, starting with one as a test pilot, feeding it into AI, and see if it can condense it down to something that's actually humanly possible. And I see you smiling over there, so this would be in your bailiwick, wouldn't it?
Well, I was looking to see if Dr. X was still around here. Looks like he's left, so.
Well, it would make his life and the the committee's life a lot easier.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyway, I would like to have more information about AI and how it applies to the work that we do here in the district.
AI and Chat GPT, Superintendent Kohal, is that something that we can schedule? First, is there interest? Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I I'm not sure if it's ready for a work session. It might be ready for some spin-off committee group to then come back and bring information because right now that's, like, we're not using AI to drive policy writing. And we, you know, right now, AI is an emerging area of interest. And so if we want to use the work session to define what we want to do with it, that's great, but we we won't have a ton to present. So, I mean, because it's, that's not an area of expertise for us, so.
Yeah, I would just like for us as board to be aware of its possibilities and limitations as it pertains to the district. That's it. I'm not talking about, maybe further out, I can bring that policy piece back up. But right now, I'd like to be able to speak intelligently about District eleven and the future of AI.
Yeah, I'll just ask the board if we can get a little more clarity. Is it on student use? Is it on paper grading? Is it on policy review? Like, what's, what do you want? Because I can't decide right now if I give it to John or I give it to Tamara. Like, like, what am I exploring here for AI?
Well, Jill is coming out of a classroom closer to any of the rest of us. Would it be student perspective that we be most beneficial in learning about? Yes, that's a yes.
You'll have to punch your.
I think it's beneficial for teachers to understand that that with the advent of laptops and one-to-one post-COVID, the the kids are accessing Google to highlight, copy and paste, and then put their name on it and turn that in. And that's frustrating coming from a teacher's standpoint, so I think teachers would probably get a, have have something to say about that.
Okay, we'll take it sometime, maybe early February. Can I get a month to work with the executive cabinet and refine it?
Yeah, there's no hurry.
There's no hurry. You can take a couple of months, even March is good. Director Nelson.
I was just going to help also add in that I think it would be good for the board to have a conversation in thinking about, do we need to start thinking about policy for what AI looks like in D eleven and how it's going to impact our classrooms and what are our expectations? So putting it back on us as well. Yeah.
Yeah. Usually CASB provides policies, so maybe they, after their conference, they are developing something. Director.
That would be very ambitious if they were doing it already after their conference, but maybe, who knows? We all received a presentat, well, most of us received a presentation, sorry, Directors Carey and Ha- Haftley, on the Coronado High School project and their legislative efforts. And then we we received a letter today about it as well. And they would like, it's it's a, they would like to receive credit for their STEM efforts. And there was one, it was two-part. Oh, they wanted a letter of support. So I wondered if we might have, I I'd be curious in some academic direction or how that might look from the academic side if that is something we would want to support. Again, it's, there's the legislative angle. They'd like to to have the legislature support credits, high school credit for their STEM work. And so they're asking us for that letter. And I just, we don't have to decide that tonight, but maybe it's a work session topic or a retreat topic where we can do that for them if we are in support of it. And the other thing I, this has come up before with our, with the students and the conversation that they are promoting, that student board angle. We are not the first board to have been asked about having, you know, a student board or, and I know Superintendent has his student cabinet, but how we might increase input from students, whether it's having a student representative on our board, what that might look like. There's so many different models we know now from some of the conversations at CASB. But those are the two things. So I guess maybe for thumbs up or not, maybe that student support for Coronado, cougar's gone wired.
Okay, the first one that you talked about, which was the letter from Coronado, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so maybe that is a future topic that we can bring up. If there is support for having a work session, then we can certainly consider that. And the second topic was about the student representation on the board itself. Superintendent Kohal.
Yeah, so I think I verbally committed already to bringing that forward with Ms. Klein and and Ms. Goddick. So I'd kind of like a couple of weeks in January after the break to work with them and then bring that to a work session. Why don't we say, is there a third one in January? Is it the seventeenth, twenty-fourth, blah, blah?
Beginning of February.
Beginning of February. Bring that in a work session and have them present the options. They have already given me a couple of loose options. Is it a student, you know, I think we already kind of named it, instead we got the DAC, we got the SAC, we got the JAC, we got the MOAC. Could we have a STACK, which is a student accountability committee? And or is it that we have a STACK representative sit on each one of the existing committees? I think the students certainly feel power in having them represented together as a group. But then I just don't know if we know what it is we're asking of them. Where we have a committee structure right now, where we have very clear lanes and guidelines of, this is what the DAC does, this is what the budget subcommittee does, this is what a SAC does. So I think that's probably the conversation point. The group that I spoke with from CASB that isn't necessarily the decision, but they didn't seem very interested in a eighth chair or I guess a ninth chair at the dais. They want to be a part of the decision-making, but I don't think that they feel that a single person can represent twenty-three thousand kids at any one given time. So I think they're looking for collective voice or at least distributed voice. But I look forward to working with Ms. Klein and Ms. Goddick to bring that, if you'll give us till the first first work session in February to them bring it. And then we can bring it then as action afterwards for a vote if we're going to formalize that relationship.
Is the board good with that thumbs up? With Director Roth's request? Is that all? Do we have more?
Well, so would you like me to come back in January with the request for the Coronado High School team?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you certainly can. I haven't had a chance to look at it. Have other board directors looked at? Okay, on on that, go ahead.
I just wonder, I haven't read it yet either, but I I wonder if it would make sense to ask our ad academics department to give us feedback on, like, if they view what the work they've done meets the standards or the criteria to earn credit? Because I don't know the answer to that. So I guess I'm thinking this isn't necessarily, I mean, at some point, it's for us to approve, but I need guidance from the experts to tell me, like, yeah, this really does make sense or, well, it's kind of lacking in this area, maybe we need to supplement, so.
That is what I was asking.
Oh, okay.
So I appreciate you putting maybe better words to it or or, yes, that that's what I'm hoping that we could have guidance on.
Okay, so like, the ask is, can we kick this over to them to then come back to us at a work session?
And and give us some information.
Okay, I have thumbs up on that.
Academic impact, if it if it's fitting.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
And maybe that information, if the board is comfortable with, even instead of scheduling it at a work session, it can be sent through email to the board. And if, following that, we do need a work session, we can have one. So can?
Yeah, I like the email option. This is kind of this rock and a hard place. The students came forward and said this is something they wanted to bring forward and lobby for at the state level. I'm never going to tell students no for them to lobby at the state level for whatever they want. And so what I what I what I want to be careful on, and I think email is best for us to get information of the board, is if we think it's lacking some things, well, I'm not the governor and I'm not the state. So, you know, again, they're not asking us, they're, and they're asking us for a letter, I believe, in support. But a lack of a letter and support, I don't think is going to stop the group from lobbying. They, I believe there are other schools in the robotics network that are bringing this together as kind of a conglomerate cohort initiative. So I think an email is a great way for us to take a review of our own internal program, for us to decide if we think the board wants to give a reference or support to that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Can you? Go ahead.
Does that mean that because they've requested that we come out on January sixth, which is, which is a Saturday, just the, we're talking about the Coronado Robotics. They've requested that we come out to see them. Yeah, Saturday morning, January sixth. These are phenomenal kids, what a great program. We're not talking about saying, no, we're not going to see that, right?
No, no, you can still go and see.
Okay.
And so, and just to, for the new board directors, Coronado, when they were a school spotlight last year, brought the robotics club as part of that presentation and actually brought a throwing and catching robot that did an excellent job of both throwing and catching.
Yeah.
So so the board, the previous board has seen it live in action, and I think their reputation precedes their work. And I hope that anyone who can make the time is able to go see them, but doesn't doesn't take the request to lobby against the state, it's, these are not prerequisites of.
Seeing no further agenda item requests. Seeing no further agenda item requests, Ms. Olson, you've captured all the requests that I've made. Thank you. Calendar review, Wednesday, December 20th, we have a board retreat. It's being scheduled at the U.S. Olympic and Paralympic Museum. Ms. Olson will give you additional information about parking and things of that nature. The meeting is scheduled to start at 1:00, so please be there on a timely manner. And it's, right now, it's scheduled from 1:00 to 4:00. If it, I think we have the facility from 1:00 to 5:00. We have to be out by 5:00. So if the retreat spills over a little bit longer, so maybe keep that in mind. So 1:00 to 4:30 would be, if it takes us a little bit longer to finish all the topics on the agenda. We reached out to the, is it George Welsh? Mr. Welsh, who facilitated one of the board retreats earlier this year. He is going to be there at that meeting. And Superintendent Kohl and I am talking with him about some of the topics that we need to bring up at that board retreat. If you have any thoughts or feedback on some things that need to be covered at the board retreat, please do send me an email and share it with me. And then winter break, I hope all of you have happy holidays and wonderful time with your loved ones. We are scheduled right now on the calendar for Wednesday, January 3rd, for a work session. So since that is already on the calendar, that's where I'm going to lean towards with a special meeting that day, unless the board reaches out to me, that that day is not going to work out to them. But right now, that is already on the calendar. And if you cannot be there in person, you can certainly attend remotely. So right now, we do have that meeting scheduled on Wednesday, January 3rd. With that, is there anything else I failed to address? Superintendent may have a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, roll call, please. Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haftley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are officially adjourned at 8:16 PM. And happy holidays to all of you that are still up here, and our community members too.
And drive safe, it's snowy and icy out there right now. Yep.